All right, so 6:01, and I'm sorry, the last piece thing. Do we have our acting secretary taking minutes tonight? Do we have Sue Colby here?
No, no.
Okay, so you're in.
They're full.
Okay. So, a quick announcement before we get started on the agenda. I am stepping in as the acting chair tonight. Cindy Kuzinski, our chair, is at home ill. And the rules in the state of Massachusetts are such that the acting chair or the chair has to be in person at a hybrid meeting. So Cindy is not the chair this evening. She's at home as a member of the committee. I'm acting chair, and in my place, we have acting secretary Laura. And that should move us forward into the agenda.
Share.
All right, so we will start with a call to order. Mayor LaChapelle, here. Mayor Goldstein.
Here.
Ben Hershey, did we just say no for him?
I have not encountered this one. No response.
No response.
He is absent.
He is absent. Okay. Sam Hunter.
Here.
Laura Scott.
Present.
Cynthia Kuzinski.
Here.
And Megan Harvey, here. So it's 6:02, and we have started. The first thing, so I'm putting Laura on the spot, and I can pull you in.
Writing down role.
So the first thing on the agenda would be correspondence, as reported by Laura. I did not receive any correspondence.
We did not receive any correspondence. Therefore, we have none to report this evening.
All right.
Gifts, I don't believe we have any either.
We don't have any gifts.
Okay.
Just ask a point of order.
Absolutely.
About correspondence, and Laura, you might know the answer to this. Is that all correspondence to like the entire committee? Or like, does that include kind of one-on-one correspondence with members of the community?
I think it's meant to include everything that is sent to us in a professional capacity, so anything sent to your school committee email. But you should notify, if you receive something to just you, you should just forward, if not the entire message, forward a brief explanation to the secretary.
Okay.
And the chair.
Sounds good.
So anything that is in the inbox of the secretary?
I think it's anything, anything, but in order for us to be able to report it.
To be able to report it, it's gotta be, okay, cool. Thank you, I've just always wondered about that.
All right, and next on our agenda is the student representative update, and we do not have our students in-house, but we have the update. Are we just reading it?
The high school update.
So the high school update, she emailed me today and said that she did not have an update.
Okay, so we have this older one. Is that from?
It's from McKenzie.
It's from McKenzie. So we don't need, are you reading this one out, or is this from before?
That was from before.
Okay. In that case, we have no student representative update at the high school level, and as far as I'm aware, we have no middle school student representative update.
The student was ready to, the middle school student was ready to give an update, but we changed the date. She already had another event that she was in, but so they will both be there for the next meeting in December.
Great. To let the public know, that's a new development. Typically, we've had one student representative who was always a high school student. We recently had a discussion about maybe expanding that to lower levels, so some of you'll be coming from Mountain View. Wonderful, thank you.
Yes, it's exciting. And they do tend, in my experience anyway, the student representatives tend to be the busiest students in the district.
Can I say in lieu of the student update then, there are two concerts that will be happening in December. The first is at Mountain View. It will include the middle school chorus, middle school concert band, and then the elf band will also be playing. I believe that's December 11th at 6:00 p.m. Somebody fact-check me. And I think it's the following week will be the high school concert band, chorus, and elf will be performing again. They're wonderful. They should be better attended than they are. Let's get back on that train of supporting these students. They do incredible work, and I think since COVID, they've just taken a little bit of hit where the community involvement is concerned. And I'm gonna notify the ECOA as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Fact-check those dates.
I do have the 13th of December at 6:30 for the also music middle school concert. Is what they told me.
Okay.
I know though that the, on the school calendar for each of the high school and the middle elementary school there, but posted for parents.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Yes, it is on the website.
Coming up, they'll be probably before our next meeting, so didn't want you to miss it. That's all.
All right. And then our last few announcements from me. One is congratulations and welcome to our upcoming committee members, both of whom are in the room here, Linda Markey and Eric Ayette. Congratulations, and congratulations to those who were re-elected up here. That group will be sworn in in January, and so we will, at that time, there's one more meeting in December with this group, and then there'll be the swearing-in, and then the meetings from that point forward will be with the new committee.
Will be set by that new committee.
And will be, and the dates will be set, but they will also be with those folks. Yeah. And I just wanted to also add on there that we have had, we had a date for this November meeting, and then we had it to reschedule due to a conflict of space and time in this room. It turns out you can't have two meetings in the exact same place at the exact same time, as it turns out. And then, in our rescheduled date, we did not have a quorum. We had too many members down with various colds, flus, COVIDs, illnesses, and such. And so here we are on our second rescheduling, and that is the explanation for why we are here tonight on this date.
Those laws of physics are brutal.
Yeah, yeah, it really is. And so are, you know, viruses and germs. All right, unless there are any other updates, we will move on to public comments, public speak. All right. Cindy, did you have any other announcements you wanted to add?
No, no, thank you.
All right, so it is 6:07, and I will open public speak. For public speak, please identify who you are, raise your hand if you're in the room, and go up to the podium. If you're at home, we will unmute you, and you have three minutes to tell us what you are hoping to share.
I'm looking at the, don't see anybody yet. We will give it a minute for folks to decide, should they want to raise their hand. Seeing none at 6:08, I am now closing public speak, and we will move on with our agenda to our superintendent update.
Today, so we're gonna have Julie Ann Levin present the accountability in the MCAS data to you. Julie Ann is in charge curriculum, also grants, and also she does some work with diversity. So very lucky to have her work here in the district in so many different ways and doing an excellent job in all the areas. So we were, really wanted to bring about accountability to the people here today, as well as those watching on TV, so that you can see exactly where the district fell in the MCAS, and then some information about instructional coaching and what professional development is happening here also. Whenever you're ready.
I don't know how to make this happen.
We are ready.
It worked earlier.
Yeah, it worked when we were playing around with it.
Okay, that's promising.
Is it because I?
It says there's no signal now.
So it doesn't want it to be HDMI 4. That can't be anything on your end.
Nope.
Anyone who feels that they might have information out of here, please feel free to.
Not real.
None of these buttons are working.
It was literally working right before. Wait, wait.
So those buttons are working, that's good.
Oh dear.
Maybe this, yeah, maybe we should.
Well, doesn't feel like the right.
No.
Move.
This is your favorite, Laura.
What I ate before this meeting.
It was truly working just before.
It was truly working.
It really was.
When I tested it, I had witnesses. Should we, should we stop with that? With that, that doesn't feel like that's a good idea.
I have a question.
I can't stop it.
Can we possibly, Julie, would you be able to jump into the Google Meet?
I could do that, yes.
And then just share your presentation that way?
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be the best way to do it.
Happy to do that. Yep.
Okay. Wonderful.
So everybody, I appreciate your patience as we figure out how to do this, but we should be able to see it in the hybrid meeting. I don't know that it will appear on this screen, but there is probably a way to make that happen too, so.
I think I need to make you a co-host.
You're gonna wanna mute your, there you go.
It says I'm not, oh, there we go, okay.
And Cindy, can you confirm that you can hear her?
I can hear her.
Okay.
I can see her.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
And we can see this here, perfect.
Perfect. Great. Hi. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Julie Ann Levin. I usually hear her pronouns. I do wanna just take this quick minute to recognize that I am probably jinxing myself. I don't think I'll be at the December meeting. So Member Goldstein, Member Kuzinski, I don't know what to say. It's been such an honor to work with you both. Member Kuzinski has been on the school committee since before I was hired seven years ago. Member Goldstein and I have been working together for the last six years, and honestly, two of the most supportive people that I've ever worked with. So I really appreciate your leadership, your dedication to the community, and honestly, it's been a pleasure being here with you. So I will miss you as you both move away from this arena. Don't lose much. Please come back to us.
Thank you.
All right, so accountability in MCAS. I did just wanna start off with reminding us about our strategic plan goals. Every time we get an opportunity to come back and center ourselves around our strategic plan, that feels like a good opportunity to me. We have four goals. The first goal is around aligning our curricula with our guiding principles. Guiding principles are a separate document in our strategic plan. I highly recommend going to our website, epsd.us, to look at those guiding principles to know what kind of school district you're in. They really talk a lot about what we value in this community. The second goal is around family and community engagement and refining our approach to that. Our third goal is around our mission. Again, the mission is a separate text that is also on our website that you can look at, and specific to the mission that equity is guiding, our decision-making and conduct. And then our fourth is around effective advocacy. Oh my gosh, it just happened over there.
Oh my gosh, it's working.
Wow, sorry, that was exciting. Effective advocacy for ensuring adequate resources to meet our strategic goals. These four are our strategic goals, and I really wanna kick off with that goal four, that this is a great opportunity when we're looking at data to really talk about what this, we can learn from this data, and then what we can advocate for in terms of improving our data. So what does MCAS and accountability mean? MCAS and accountability are two different things, but we often conflate them. MCAS stands for, what does MCAS stand for? Can I interact with you all? I never remember.
You clearly are, so.
Yeah, I was like, this is gonna happen. What's, what does MCAS stand for?
Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment.
Well, okay, no, superintendent, you can't answer.
Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment.
System.
System, yeah.
I was trying to remember.
Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. So MCAS is made up of, right now, subject, three-subject tests, math, ELA, and science and technology engineering. We will be this spring piloting a civics component to MCAS.
Okay.
Interesting.
That's good in some respects.
Yes, so I'll have more data to share with you next year when we have our civics data as well. MCAS results are used for, primarily in my world, the first bullet point, improvements in teaching and learning. So we're looking at the data to look really at the norm reference piece of it, which is how we perform in relation to other schools in the state that look like our schools, so are the same grade spans, for example. When we're looking at other schools in the Commonwealth, we can say, wow, on this standard, we are not performing to the average of how people in the state are performing, so maybe that's programmatic. We might need to change some focus in our curriculum. MCAS results are also used for school and district accountability, which is what we're talking about today. And then, third, they are used for student accountability. So the student accountability can be anything from flagging a student who may need some extra support up to that 10th grade competency determination. Accountability also, so that's MCAS. Accountability is a formula that uses MCAS results, but also uses improvement of student subgroups on MCAS, chronic absenteeism for the schools, graduation and dropout rates, specifically for high school, completion of advanced coursework, also just for high school, and then participation in MCAS. So just to remind you, the last time that we had a full accountability dataset was in the spring of 2019. That was when we were in year two of turnaround at Center School. We had not consolidated, and we didn't know that there was a pandemic coming that would cancel MCAS in the spring of 2020. So there was no accountability formula that was created that year. Then in the spring of 2021, we had sort of a shortened version of MCAS. You may not remember that, but I guarantee your children do because they love that. And that, because it was abbreviated, it wasn't normed, it wasn't scaled, and so, again, there was no accountability formula. Then, in the spring of 2022, we fully implemented the next-gen MCAS that was aligned to our updated frameworks. And during that time, because we knew there was a lot going on with MCAS, there was also a modified competency determination for 10th graders. So 10th graders could show proficiency in something other than MCAS in order to graduate if they hadn't had the opportunity to really, you know, have multiple opportunities to pass MCAS. This year, we are in our first year of data that has our consolidated school, which means that this year we are, our accountability is compared to a new cohort of schools in the Commonwealth. So the schools we used to be compared to in our third and fourth grades and our five through eighth grades that were at separate schools are now all in one building. So now we're compared to other like schools that give MCAS to grades three through eight. So everything is a little different.
I have a question about that, Julie. What is the difference? Because I can understand if they're separating us by curricula and stuff, but I don't understand what the argument is for an impact on learn, I, can you put this?
Like, why the grade span comparison instead of?
I don't know.
I have a similar question.
Yeah.
You might also not know the answer to, and that's okay. Are we talking like, schools that are similar in terms of makeup, like K to eight schools, or are we talking about size-specific, like this number of students?
No, grade span similarity. Yeah, it's the grade span similarity.
Size would make sense.
The size makes more sense, and that's what I was, whatever, who am I to tell?
To be clear, that's the state, that's not Julie Ann's.
No, it's not. However.
Just to be clear for all who are watching.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I don't, I don't make those decisions. However, there are really cool data tools that in Edwin Analytics and a couple other places, like there's a DART tool also, where you can actually compare your school to anyone you decide you wanna compare your school to. And so we could do that. And I often go in and I say like, okay, everyone always compares us to South Hadley, let's say, right? So like, I'm wanna see us compared to South Hadley.
Right. They're shunked up by grade, so.
Right, so any one of you who ever wants to do that data dive with me, you just let me know, and I'll show you all of the ways that we can compare our data to other places.
Can I make one note too for the pub? I have a lot of issues with MCAS. We're gonna get into this a lot. Not tonight, not tonight, but I'm saying that my, my contributions tonight are coming from that place. We're gonna do a lot of work in this in the future term, I hope. But I want the public to understand that that shift, putting us in this different cohort, is putting us up against anecdotally wealthier districts. Wealthier districts are the ones who generally build pre-K through eight schools as opposed to districts with somewhat less wealth, access to these kinds of things, where they tend to have older, several buildings. So I just want that to be clear when we're looking at this data and we're absorbing this. We were just put into a different cohort for reasons we've discussed. We don't see a lot of sense, and it's also putting us up against communities that are pretty wealthy.
Up against.
We'll let you present, and then we'll, we'll hold some questions and comments until.
No, I really, I very much appreciate that comment because it will put a slide further on in better context. So thank you very much for saying that. So our official accountability report for East Hampton, I'm sorry, this is so tiny. So there are two ways that we are scored, that we get a number in our accountability formula. One of them is criterion referenced, one of them is norm referenced. Do we wanna do another little, like, does anyone know the difference between criterion referenced and norm referenced? Okay, I'm gonna tell you really quickly. This is a very simplistic explanation, so I'm not winning any prizes here in the statistics world. Criterion referenced means that there is a static criteria that you need to meet. So like, if you're on a 0 to 100, then you're on that 0 to 100, and wherever you fall, you fall. Norm referenced is movable, right? So norm referenced might be scaled to whoever the best was at, you know, had the highest score, maybe. And so it's a different way of comparing us. Criterion referenced is really comparing us to ourself and our own goals and targets. Norm referenced is comparing us to everyone else. So in our criterion reference, so comparing ourselves to our own goals and targets, we made moderate progress toward our targets, 41%. 50% is accepted as approximately a year's worth of progress, so 41% is just below a year's worth of progress. Our norm reference percentile is how we are compared to other like schools. So that's that same thing again, like other three to eight schools, other high schools is the norm referenced. And in, for East Hampton High School, our norm reference data was that we are in the 27th percentile, and for Mountain View School, we're in the 33rd percentile.
You don't have off the top of your head how that compares to 22, do you?
So I do, a little bit. So in, for East Hampton High School, we were in the 26th percentile in the last one. For the other schools, we were everywhere between, now I can't remember, it was like 24 and like 84.
That's where, what we referenced a moment ago, with being pushed into a different cohort, you start to see things look screwy.
Yeah.
And I don't want parents and community members thinking that all of a sudden, it's like the Lord of the Flies.
You may have remembered, so many years ago, Lord of the Flies, that's a great reference. Many years ago, Maple was in Level 3, and then they had this great progression and made it all the way up, I think, to the 84th percentile.
Moved money there.
Yeah, okay. Wow, she's just getting right into it. Okay, yeah, no, it's not, not a, not a question of why that happened, right? Then we went into turnaround with Center School, and they had gone down to the 8th percentile, and by the time they were out of turnaround, they were all the way up into the 40s. So it's all over the place, and yes, the, the grade span matters very much. And so we are now being, that 33rd percentile is comparing us to schools we've never been compared to before.
I think Newton is one of them.
I am quite, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
We're both on this committee for two years.
You resign. You want me to resign?
I, this is gonna be.
I don't want anyone to resign. Let me keep that very clear.
Where it says, it says not requiring assistance or intervention.
Yes.
With that, so, I mean, I think that's another thing that's important to clarify is that, you know, these, this doesn't look great, especially compared to where we had been. We're being compared to a different cohort, and also, you know, DESI does not feel that we are requiring outside intervention.
Yeah, absolutely not. We are, we are well above.
They're very happy about that.
Yes, very happy. We love the folks at DESI. We love when they come in, we love when they give us grant money to improve our schools, but the better place for us to be is not requiring assistance or intervention.
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, okay. So then, to get into the criterion reference, so us against our goals, our own goals, not compared to the rest of the Commonwealth schools. I do wanna highlight East Hampton High School. We got all of the points we could possibly earn in all three subjects for achievement. So what that means is we actually were making more than a year's worth of progress for those students as compared to the 10th graders who took MCAS in the year before. So that was really exciting to see that our students are really making it there. Because of that, our criterion reference target percentage, so for the whole district, it was 41%. Just the high school, their target percentage was 71%. So they're making substantial progress towards their targets. Again, really good news, and I'm gonna tell you more about what's going on at EHS in a few more slides.
I wanted to make one more point for the public because it brought to mind with the 10th grade thing. I just, I get a lot of comments about this, and I think this is important. People are, not a lot of people are on the call tonight, maybe they'll watch it later, and I'd like to just clarity out there. You also, also bear in mind, you're talking about a singular group of kids. So if you're talking about a year-to-year comparison, this year's 10th graders, we're not last year's 10th graders, they won't be next year's 10th graders, there can be fluctuations just based on that bubble of kids.
Cohorts, yeah, the cohort, so comparing cohort to cohort instead of a cohort against itself in terms of growth is really different.
Right.
Yes, yep, thank you. This is great. You should come to all my presentations.
She's going to.
All right, so Mountain View, a little bit of a different story. Obviously, because the average was 41% and the high school's at 71%, we knew that Mountain View was gonna be lower in terms of our progress. But again, I do wanna say that this is compared to how we were doing in our old buildings, and so it's all very different. And there's still good news. First of all, we got all possible points on our English language proficiency gains, which I just wanna say, like, very quickly, again, advocacy for future stuff, like, this means that we are making the right decisions around our English language learners, and I just wanna highlight that because we have a lot of people working really, really hard on that particular subgroup, and to see that we, we made more than a year's worth of progress with those students, I think is something to, to really be thankful for our staff. So shout out to them. Also, we got all possible points on chronic absenteeism, which means that Mountain View is a place that kids like to come. I'm making a generalization there, but kids are coming to school, they're not as absent, as much as they used to be. Chronic absenteeism was one of the things that got us into turnaround at Center School, and so to see that we got all possible points in improvement towards our target is really good news. We need to work on achievement now that we're in this new cohort.
The kids are in a healthy, safe building that this community supported and paid for. Makes a difference. It's data, makes a difference in data.
Really, really amazing. I love seeing that chronic absenteeism data, 'cause kids wanna come to school. That's awesome. And right, and parents feel safe sending their kids to school, which is the other piece of that. All right, so then, I just wanted to show you a few slides here. This is pretty typical of our data over, this might be what, the seventh or eighth presentation I've given to school committee about MCAS data. It's pretty typical that we have fewer students in the not meeting expectations category and fewer students in the exceeding expectations category when compared to the state data. So that, that's typical, you'll see that in every slide I'm gonna show you. This is the ELA MCAS for grades three through eight. So this is how many students have met proficiency or partially met proficiency in ELA in grades three through eight. So again, like, just slightly lower of the students who are not meeting expectations than the state average. So the state bars are on the left-hand side, Mountain View School's on the right-hand side. So we are pretty typical to what the state average is, but that's where we usually see the differences, is in exceeding and not meeting.
So that state average, that is every district in the state that they're talking about?
That's every student's individual score on the ELA in grades three through eight. Yes, in the state, yeah. 10th grade ELA, again, fewer students not meeting expectations, but also fewer students exceeding expectations, but really, the vast majority of students are passing MCAS in 10th grade. One thing I wanted to notice, because, so when I do my data dive, like, it's nice to see how many students have met proficiency, and we do all of that kind of general, but then I wanna look at the standards and like, what is the curriculum, right? And so I just thought this was really interesting, and when parents ask me, like, well, what should I be doing with my student at home to like, make things better? I'm like, this is it, writing. It's writing. It's writing. It's authentic writing tasks. We really need to ask students questions, get them to formulate arguments in their brains, and then have them write it down. So that's, that's on the 10th grade MCAS, you can see here. The only places where we were lower than the state averages on the ELA test were in the writing of the essay, conventions of standard English, and production and distribution of writing. Vocabulary, reading, all of those things above, in some cases, way above the state averages, but writing is the piece that we really need to be focused on next.
Can you take, like, two minutes to explain how they score these written samples? Are these scored district-blind? Are these?
Yep, they are, and they also have, like, I think it's three people read each essay, and then it's an average of the scores. And there's something, like, if it's more than two points apart, they rescore it. But yeah, they pay teachers to sit in a big room, often during breaks, although it might be virtual now, I haven't done it in a while. We used to go sit in a big room, and you just get the text, you don't know where it's from, you don't know who it's from, you know what the prompt is, you know what the grade level is, and you have a rubric.
I have a question, too. Do you happen to know, and I'm sure this has changed, is this all typed or handwritten?
It's typed now.
Typed now?
Yeah, yep, yep.
That's new, this.
That's new?
We've had it for a couple of years. The best part about it being typed, I have to say, is that we actually get all of the student writing samples, and so our ELA teams can really dig into what happened. And I really appreciate that data. I think they really appreciate being able to look at that, like, wow, that's what the, and they can see it, like, by students.
And students. Nuisance affects scoring. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was about to ask, just have, and, you know, this might be totally in another direction, but like, at what point are we teaching typing and our kids, you know, I just want to, like, to what extent are our kids fluent in typing by the time they get to 10th grade?
So because we went one-to-one over.
COVID helped with that.
COVID, that's what it was called. Yeah. We actually, yeah, students start typing very early. We have iPads still in kindergarten, but then we moved to Chromebooks by first grade. We don't test until third grade, so, yeah, kids get a lot of opportunities. That was a nice way to frame it, right?
Yeah, there you go.
All right. But conventions matter. I do want to say, conventions matter. Okay. Okay, so on to math quickly, very similar story as to ELA. That's our three to eight. And there's our grade 10. So students are getting there. Here's our five and eight, science and technology engineering. Same story, fewer kids in not meeting expectations, fewer kids in exceeding expectations. Most of our students are right there in the middle in meeting and partially meeting.
But for grade 10, the partially meeting for grade 10 is not a qualification, right? Don't they have to be in the grade?
About to ask that same question.
Partially meeting is passing.
Partially meeting is passing, okay.
Yep, yep.
That's counterintuitive, okay.
Yeah.
I have some things to say.
I mean, that's good. I think all these kids should be able to graduate.
I think we're going to have some great conversations over the next two years.
Yes.
Or more. Yes.
If I was a parent, I would be freaking out looking at that, thinking, if my kid is a so-so student, they've got a 50-50 shot of passing that the first time. So it's, yeah, I'm glad.
Yeah. And, and further, there are students who are right on the cusp of not meeting and partially meeting, who have another pathway that they can use to, to meet that competency determination. It's called an EPP, Educational Proficiency Plan. And so there's even, like, a little bit of wiggle room around the cusp.
Aside from taking the whole test again.
Yep.
I also have a question about that, and I'm so sorry.
Don't, please don't apologize. This is your meeting, friends.
I apologize to everybody else.
I'm apologizing to the community. This is what you get. So the, the other question I had was, when it comes to those 10th grade MCAS, they have to pass the MCAS, they also have to meet district criteria for graduation. So it's not just that they have to score partially proficient on the MCAS, they also have to pass their classes.
Oh, yeah.
And so it's not, just so that everybody's clear.
Which is, so they could pass all the classes, not pass the MCAS.
Exactly.
And risk from not being able to graduate.
And that's the problem.
And that's why we supported.
So without getting too much into this, we did solve this problem over COVID with the modified competency determination, because the way that students who hadn't had the opportunity to pass MCAS yet, or who just hadn't passed MCAS yet, were able to meet the competency determination, was through their performance in their classes. So just FYI, like, we do have a solution for this, and it's.
Always have. It's, it's fine. We're going to get into that next term.
I love doing the MCAS presentation. All right. So this brings us to, because we're always trying to link our data to our goals in the district, I wanted to share with you what our proposed goals were. Our student learning goal, this is actually our second year of this goal, and I really think this does speak to the change in chronic absenteeism, I think, this is my supposition here, that we've really been trying to teach specifically to having students be able to report an increase in their feelings of positive self-identity and classroom belonging. So the SEL curriculum that we've brought in, the explicit teaching we're doing around things like optimistic thinking, which by the way, is something you can train your brain to do, you're not just like an optimist or a pessimist, you can become one, depending on how you train your brain.
Was that aimed at me and Laura?
No, it was not. It was not at all. So doing that work, especially in our pre-K to 8 building, I think has really made some positive changes for our students. Then for our professional practice goal, because we're looking at all of those students who are, like, doing right around the average, right? We want to see more students in exceeding expectations. We want to move our students in that direction. And so how are we going to do that? And we have theories of action that, that lead our professional development and our professional learning. And our theories of action right now is that if we can implement a multi-tiered system of support and really implement universal design for learning as a framework, then we can actually meet every student's needs, and we can move them along that continuum. The state had some language for a while about raising the achievement floor instead of closing the gaps, and we've done a really good job of raising the achievement floor, like, we don't have students who are failing, not on MCAS, not in grades, like, we just don't. We really support students, but now we need to get them higher. So how are we going to do that? And, and universal design for learning, multi-tiered systems of supports, these are the ways you do that. This is what research, research has shown us. So along those lines, one of the things that we were able to change this year was we were able to bring instructional coaching into our high school. And this is going to change instruction. This is what's going to change student outcomes. I can't say that lightly at all. This is like, the most important thing we can be doing right now, is instructional coaching. The instructional coach at the high school brought in a PD presenter, Andrew Watson. Fascinating, highly recommend his website, his books. And he taught the high school teachers something that elementary school teachers have known forever, which is schema theory. When we talk about early reading acquisition, we talk about foundational numeracy in math, what we're talking about is little bits of information coming together, being taught in a systematic order, being able to reference back to previous bits of knowledge so that we are building a whole concept, right? So that's what we're now getting at the high school, because we have this excellent instructional coaching model, we have excellent professional development, and high school teachers are starting to really dive into what's that systematic teaching of little bits of knowledge that all get connected and like Velcro in your brain, so that they actually move from your short-term to your long-term memory. For example.
Questions.
Oh, you have questions.
Go ahead and finish the slide.
I did put on here some, some of the pedagogical implications of schema theory, things like having students discover and practice on their own. So inquiry, inquiry-based curriculum models is, is what we're implementing. That's the new curriculum. We want students to ask each other questions and make meaning of answers in, in their own worlds, referencing their own memories, referencing their background knowledge. Using contextual schemas serves as an aid to new vocabulary, concepts, structures. Using realistic examples, so back to something parents can do, asking your student question about natural phenomenon as your, or phenomena, as you're driving, is an incredible help, right? Why, why is the sky that color right now? Does that mean I'm out of time? Okay. I was like, all right. So those are the, kind of the simple things you can do to activate your student schema so that they are making meaning of, for example, natural phenomena, and then be able to attach that to their learning. Grammar is one that I think is really fascinating in terms of schema building, and because I am an English teacher by trade, I think it's really exciting to teach grammar to students. Schema theory tells us to teach grammar as patterns, not as rules. And if you know the English language, you know that our rules are only there to be broken. So recognizing patterns is actually the best way to teach, where we were seeing those problems in our MCAS data, conventions, production and distribution of writing, the writing of that essay, right? Those are all places where we can actually use schema theory to make that better. Let me give you an example. I know, you love the interactive presentation. Okay. There are nine words up on this slide. I'd like you to quickly, not quickly, I'd like you to try to put them in order. Does anyone want to give it a try?
I know what it is you're referring to here.
Okay, well, don't say it yet, because that's part of the thing.
Are we supposed to be able to do it without writing it down?
No, no, you can write it down.
Okay, great. And it might be at a disadvantage here.
Oh, yeah. Feel free to write it down.
Young, oh.
Feel free to write it down. But we can move on if you, if you, Megan, you got something, she's got, okay, yeah, sorry. Or, sorry, member Harvey. Trying. Okay, what do you think?
I got, I got something.
Yeah?
Wait, did I get it all? So I, I have written, hold on, I'm going to switch two of the words, a small, old, useful, plastic, yellow, circular adapter.
Oh, I forgot the word small.
Is that right? Did I skip one?
You did skip a word.
Well, that's my disadvantage.
But it was very close.
Okay.
Megan, do you want to try?
I had forgotten the word small.
Oh, record.
So I think that that.
Okay.
So I'm disqualified. I said a useful, old, circular, plastic, I think I skipped yellow, too.
I did skip the word that you thought I was going to skip.
Okay, so we failed.
It's not that.
Okay. So we should have some teachers come help us.
Yep. No worries. You had no schema with those nine words. I asked you to do basically an impossible task, because you had no reference point at all for what I was talking about, right? So if you had, had the reference point ahead of time, and I'm going to give you the reference point afterwards, you may have come up with a useful, small, old, circular, yellow, plastic record adapter, which is a thing I have in my home. I find it very useful. The article always comes first, A, and then this is the order of adjectives. It doesn't change. Every time you say three adjectives in an order, I know what order you're going to put them in based on what they are, because this is how, opinion, size, age, shape, color, material, purpose, and then your noun comes at the end. Happens every time.
Do you know how I knew that, Laura?
How?
I watched a TikTok about it.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
So we call it callback, folks. It's a callback.
From the record.
If I had further incited your schema, I would have given you this picture.
I know.
And then you may have actually gotten two, right? But you needed all of those pieces in order to put it all together and create the whole concept, right? But I gave them to you bit by bit, not as the whole schema. So this is what we're doing in our schools and our classrooms. We are putting together all of these little bits of information, and we are creating whole concepts, and a lot of the time, we're asking students to do it on their own. And that's the difference in our instructional models now. And so that's why instructional coaching is so important, because to go from the, this is what's, this is what's taught, this is what we have to teach, we're just going to go one by one, to this idea where it's like three-dimensional knowledge, we're going to give all of these pieces, and students are going to create the whole concepts for themselves, that's a really different approach. Without instructional coaching, we cannot shift to that new model. So that was my pitch for advocacy and et cetera. That's it. I do want to say Massachusetts, the DESI School and District Profiles page is the best source of public information on all of the data. It has all of our accountability information. You can sort in lots of ways. You can't quite do the fancy sorting that I was talking about earlier, but if you want to do that, here's my phone number and my email, and I would always love to sit down and, and talk more about data. Questions?
A baby question and a bigger question regarding the, the coaching. Was the coaching at the high school across all subject areas, or was it concentrated? And what led to bringing it there as opposed to somewhere else in the district?
So we already have coaching in our elementary grades, and we had an opportunity at the high school, so the only place that currently doesn't have coaching is the middle school. So you may wonder what I'm asking for next.
Yeah, because that, my first thought that jumped out is, I think they do this pretty well at the high school. I think, I think where it's hardest to implement is where I used to teach at the middle school level.
Middle school, yeah.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah.
I, I was also a middle school teacher, so, yes, you are correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really would love to see instructional coaching at our middle school next. We had a great opportunity at the high school, which was why it just, like, came up last year. But it's been incredibly successful in our elementary school for years and years, and I, I think we will just need to share the love. Everyone, everyone deserves a coach.
So are you saying there's an opportunity to move it to the middle school level soon?
You want us to, you want us to find an opportunity to put it in the middle school?
I was like, I don't want to say anything in front of our business director.
So we didn't pay for the high school trip with some sort of grant opportunity or something?
No, no, we paid for it. It was part of last year's budget. Yep, yep.
So it's a budget question.
So I'm budget question.
Again, I'm confused why the decision was made to send it to the high school.
Oh, because at the high school, it's a part-time position, so we had in the budget someone who was going to be part-time, and we were like, oh, this is going to be great, because we can use this other part as an instructional coach.
So this is somebody who's, this was not PD, this was not a couple days here and there, this was like in the building, continuous, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, working primarily right now with our newest teachers, and kind of that's the inroad, and then hopefully it spreads and more and more people are, are interested.
So the person who has that position at the high school is .5 FTE for this coaching, but they have .5 FTE for something, some other duty in that building?
Yep.
I see.
That's correct.
For the finance committee, as they move forward into next year's budget, can have a consideration of this. Has that .5, .5 split worked? Point of order.
We're way off agenda.
Oh, thank you.
And, and I, you know, and the cross-talk, and I love interaction, but it's really not a part of an orderly meeting if you're not in the room. So I, I just want to kind of bring that back around.
I don't have any.
And a suggestion I would have around interaction or interactive presentations that that can happen at the end of the agenda or a supplement, because it is helpful, I didn't get the words in right, didn't do that very well, but, but just as far as the public and looking for other agenda items. I appreciate everyone's work and questions, but I think we need to.
Until the end for more questions.
Yeah.
Yep, no problem.
Are there other questions about this presentation that folks want to address before we move on?
I do have one question. So when we're looking at, my question is, so to, to go to a schema-based learning reference point, and then I, I look at how to apply it to like chronic absenteeism at the high school, is, is there a connection between that data point of we're not doing so well[1716.36] is there a connection between that data point of we're not doing so well and changing philosophy around schema? So it's less about you have to be there every single day to get every piece of rule? I'm just, I was wondering, why chose, why choose schema? And how does it relate to chronic absenteeism?
So the, the schema theory is attached to work that the high school's been doing for a while around complex learning.
Yep.
Right? So that's really about student engagement. And yes, that is directly connected to absenteeism, to our dropout rate, our graduation rate, et cetera.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other members have questions related to the presentation? I did have one that I wanted to ask, so I can go back and find it here. I was curious when you were talking about the MCAS results, digging into the ELA results, how we see a difference between sort of the reading and the writing part of it.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of, like, is that part of this sort of schema approach of that would help that, or is that?
Yes, I mean, so very much in writing. And in fact, we brought in some professional development at the beginning of this school year for our elementary teachers called Framing Your Thoughts, which is a very specific curriculum around using schema to build first phrases, then sentences, then paragraphs. It's very structured. So yeah, again, like, elementary teachers have been using schema theory for a while, and it's definitely like needs to get into writing. There's a lot of research around reading acquisition and schema theory. Now we're digging into the reading, the writing part of it. Yep. And at the, to be fair, at the middle school level, too. They are also doing this work around writing. Yep.
That was my only question as we were going through. Any other?
I just want to point out, too, I'm looking at that, those writing, that writing data.
Yep.
And we're not that, we're not that far off from the statewide. I mean, it seems to be.
No, but we could always be better.
No, we could always be better, but I just, I just don't want the, I don't want people to think that, you know, our students struggle uniquely with writing. This seems to be an area of weakness, relative weakness, when you look at the statewide data, too.
No, I agree. I mean, we, we do keep up East Hampton typically with the state averages.
Yeah.
I mean, ever since I've been here, we have been, except for those, that couple years where we had the turnaround. But, you know, we find the places where we know we can do a little bit of extra work and, and push ourselves professionally, and this is what we landed on this year.
Yeah.
Yep. And just to also say that writing data, I didn't, because for grades three through eight, you have to look at it for every grade level, and I didn't want to say like, this is grade three, this is grade four, this is, right? So I used 10th grade just because it was a good example.
Yeah.
But that does bear out in the other grade levels as well, that the writing pieces are more of a challenge for students than the reading comprehension, which we really focused on for years and years in professional development.
Right.
So it makes sense where we are now.
Cindy, I want to make sure I didn't miss any questions on your end. I wasn't looking to see if there's a hand.
I don't have any questions. Julianne does a great job in her presentations. She's very clear. And as a teacher, I understand what she's talking about. So I really appreciate that presentation for the public.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
It's great.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'll see you again next fall.
And before then.
Definitely not before then.
Yeah. All right, so if I just unplug, this is all going to work, right?
Should be good.
You got it. You're also connected through Google, though.
Yeah, the point.
Oh, yeah, so if you want to. Unshare.
Thank you. Okay. Should be good to go now. All right.
All right, thank you. We are still in our superintendent update portion of the agenda. Do you have something you would like to contribute about the green buses update or discussion? My understanding is that that has been moved. Is there anything you want to?
Subcommittee?
Additionally say?
No, it's going to be presented when the, with the new committee.
The new committee in January.
In January.
Or whatever goes on.
Okay.
So it's on our agenda, but that has been pushed to the new year.
And as you'll be continuing on, if you can communicate with John and work out something on that.
Absolutely. Yep.
When you say push to subcommittee, you mean?
It's not push to subcommittee.
Not push to subcommittee, push to January or later agendas.
We had the presentation at the subcommittee level at the finance committee.
Okay.
It's been recommended to be brought to the entire committee, and that's, is waiting to happen.
Yep.
But the decision was to hold off until the new committee is in place as opposed to doing it before that.
That makes sense. Thanks.
All right. The next item on our agenda are some school committee discussion points. The first is the annual meeting update.
Yes.
Do you, Sam, have any updates for us from the meeting?
I do. I put together a short presentation, and it's not super, I'll email it for the record. It's not like super substantial, it was just kind of some points I wanted to remember as I kind of go through. So what I'm going to do is instead of standing over there, I'm just going to share it here, assuming.
There's so many MASCs, too. We should be sure to clarify which one this is.
Yes. So this is the, are you guys seeing? Oh, look at that.
Nice.
Flawless, seamless. All right. And this is where I, I have to figure out how to make it a presentation.
Quick slideshow. Go over to the right.
Ah, I see. So this is the mass, and actually, it's MASC, MAS. It was the Mass Association of School Committees slash Mass Association of School Superintendents Annual Conference. It was the, it was the day after Election Day. And I will just put it out there at the beginning of this, I became very sick while I was at this conference, and I had to leave early. And then I had pneumonia, and I've only just gotten over it like yesterday. So it has been, it was definitely quite, it was, it was a great conference. I loved it. I wish I could have stayed all the way through the day on Saturday, but I absolutely could not. I was so sick. So, but I was able to attend six of the workshops. I just listed them here. I'm going to kind of go through quickly. I don't want to take up too much time, but I have taken tons of notes, and I found it to be super informative and very helpful. So the first one I went to was about, it was called Getting Started with DEI, and it was a, a panel discussion with Chelmsford, some folks from the Chelmsford Public Schools about kind of their journey through diversity, equity, and inclusion in the last few years. I walked in, I got there kind of in the middle of it. It was really interesting and helpful. I always love hearing from school districts that are really different from us and in really different places, because I think you hear about different approaches that we might not necessarily assume we're going to work another, in our district, and, you know, generally for this whole conference, that was my entire experience. I did go to the workshop that the Worcester Public Schools presented about in-sourcing busing in district, which I know is something that we've been discussing as well. And again, I found it super helpful, very detailed. I have the PowerPoint. They really got like right down to every penny, and they, you know, showed, kind of, went kind of through every single step and how they were kind of able to transition. Again, Worcester, well, as you know, very different district from East Hampton in a lot of ways, but there are some kind of surprising similarities as well, and I found it to be really, really helpful in terms of just, first of all, I learned so much about school buses. And, and I didn't, there was so much that I had no idea about, like, the way that buses are built and how they run, and the safety features that you can, that you can add on to them. And they have this system where they have snow chains that like go straight down on the tires when you press a button, because Worcester has so many hills that they needed to be able to do that. Not something that would really apply to us, but very interesting to know about. So I thought that was super cool. I went to a really cool workshop about providing district-based daycare for educators. Whoops, I did that wrong. Oh, wait, now I'm, hold on a second. This always happens when I try to do.
Try escape.
Just, just try escape generally.
Yeah, that top button, it might.
No, I got it.
Get you back.
Well, hold on, I'm just going to share, and if it goes back to the wrong page, then, all right. Sorry about that, folks. There we go. Anyway, I'm learning every day. You're presenting to everyone. That's a good warning, Google Chrome. All right. So providing district-based daycare for educators, this was something that happened eastern part of the state. I can't remember exactly which district it was. I do remember thinking it was a wealthier district than our district. But one of the cool things about it is that this school district essentially started a daycare for teachers and school staff. So it's a daycare that takes place in one of their school buildings. Because it takes place in one of their school buildings, they're able to save significantly on insurance, and they are able to, they don't need to be licensed by DEECA, which is a big deal, and it's a lot of what the, it's a lot of the cost of running a daycare, I'm sure other folks have looked into this before, daycares are really, really expensive to get up and running and to run. And despite that, the people who work in them tend to make not a whole lot of money. And so financially, they're just kind of a mess. They're like not super sustainable. One of the cool things about running it in your school district is that you save money on some of the things that make daycare so expensive. So they're able to operate a cost-neutral daycare in their school buildings for teachers and other staff at the school, and it operates from 15 minutes before the first school begins, before the high school begins, and then it closes 15 minutes after elementary school ends. And they are also able to, they were able to add on extended time for professional development, so they're open on all the teacher PD days, and they're also closed, and families don't have to pay during the summer and during school vacation. So we have talked in East Hampton, both within the context of school committee, but also just in the community more generally, about a need to find a location for Head Start, about a need to kind of provide more daycare options in town. We are a town that's really limited on daycare, and I had a child who was in preschool because of his disability, and we were really stuck because we had to choose between him going to daycare in Holyoke and him going to preschool and receiving services, because there was no way to have him bust during the day to daycare, and we were not able to find daycare in East Hampton. So, you know, I know very personally, like, how challenging that struggle is, and I've heard from a lot of folks in the district about it. I think this would be a cool thing for us to look into. It did take about, from what I could tell, because I talked with them for a while afterwards, just to kind of, I was like, what was your actual timeline here? It did take about like five years to really get it up and moving, although they were able to have like their first class within two years, and then COVID happened in the middle of them getting this going, which complicated things further. I do think it's worth like looking into it, because I don't know that we've ever seriously considered this. We certainly haven't since COVID. And I think it, it could, it could work here. I was, I was kind of, when I went into it, I was thinking like, this would be a cool thing. And then when I left, I was like, why doesn't more people do this? Like, this seems like something we should be able to do. So I thought that was cool. And then I went to two, I went to two superintendent recruitment workshops. Just, I just have the feeling that might be relevant for some reason. I found them to be, both of them to be really helpful. The last time I was on school committee, we were actually about to begin a superintendent search, so I kind of remember what the very beginning of that search looks like, and then, of course, I remember what the very end of this particular search looked like. So it's nice to have some ideas about the middle. And it was good also to connect with other school districts who are also doing superintendent searches, which there were a number of folks who were there. Everybody recognized East Hampton, of course, which was great. Love it when people know where I'm from. And I had, I had a couple really good conversations with some local school district, not, well, with school committee members, but I had, I had a really good conversation with one local superintendent, actually, who said, you know, I'm, I would love to help you guys out, like, you know, but I thought that was cool that they wanted to connect with us. So I did the best I could, but I couldn't get any of the superintendents in either of those workshops to, you know, move to East Hampton, so. I went to this thing called Legal Issues. It was, it was very vague. The name Legal Issues is like a pretty vague name. It was by far the best-attended workshop there. It was like people were like spilling out of the room, and it was basically just going through all of the relevant kind of education cases. A lot of focus on book banning in other states and attempts in Massachusetts, and just, it was really just my favorite kind of panel, which is a bunch of lawyers just reading out a bunch of case notes. So I found that to be very informative, too. It was kind of hard for me to take notes because I had to stand and lean against the wall, and I was like starting to feel sick by that point. So I was like, what am I doing here? You know, why am I so hot? But, yeah, so those were the six workshops I made it to. There were two more I wanted to go to, but I wasn't able to make it. We had a great general presentation by Darnisa Monte Jackson, and this was just talking about, and I don't know if you, if, I ran into Julianne there, too. I don't know if you were able to go to this one, but I was thinking about it while you were doing your presentation. And she did, it was just such a cool, she was talking about, you know, this was a kind of an equity and diversity, talking about different ways to have conversations with a variety of stakeholders, talking about kind of the different ways that different people kind of feel threatened in those conversations, and then how to have productive conversations with people who are feeling scared or threatened. It was really, really helpful for me, actually, just in terms of like thinking about how we have those conversations, you know, every day with folks in the community. She talked a lot about the importance of belonging, but also the way that belonging is related to data, which I was really thinking about while you were presenting earlier. You know, she also pointed out that like a lot, the real change that we're talking about, that we're, it takes four to five years to be reflected in data, which of course is longer than like the usual review cycles. And then also, like, if you think of it from a parent's perspective, like, five years, four or five years is like a long time. Your kid grows a lot in four to five years. Your family looks really different after four to five years, and you might not even be in the same school at that point. So telling families like, changes are happening, changes are good, like, it can be hard for them to see that necessarily, or to like have that same, I think of four or five years, you know, if I think about it professionally, that seems like a reasonable amount of time when I think four or five years for my kid, it doesn't feel like a reasonable amount of time. So I thought that was really helpful. And she talked about, you know, the need for data coordinators, both for admin teams, but also for classroom teachers, so that teachers don't have to spend all of their time analyzing data, that they have somebody helping them with that. I thought that was an interesting idea. And, and the importance of being harder on systems and beliefs and policies and softer on people, which I thought really resonates for our community in particular. So it was cool. It was a great presentation. I'm glad that I went, even though I thought I wasn't going to make it. At that point, I was like, what, what am I doing? There was the resolutions committee. I wanted to just report out on like kind of how we voted on these resolutions. So these were resolutions that were brought before, they, for those of you who are newer to this, I was brand new to this. I did not know what this was. I was like, do I have to go to this? And everybody was like, yes. So I went. It was a room full of like the best, you know, 200 of the nerdiest Roberts Rules people in the state. And it was one like large meeting, and where we were essentially asked to vote on these resolutions. The full text of the resolutions is actually available in our notes from our agenda from a few weeks ago. But, and, and basically, you know, we were all, the, the school committees or the groups that had come up with these resolutions would present on them, and then we would be asked to vote on them. There'd be some discussion. It went on for about four hours, and there was no food. So it was, it was physically challenging, but I thought it was really cool. I was glad that I got to be a part of it. And you'll see, the stable funding for MEKO is kind of, that doesn't really affect us at all. Transportation bidding procedures, this was just saying, you know, we need to relook at the way that, because we're having this problem where, where bus companies, there's only one that bids on a contract, and then that's it. That's what we're stuck with. So it was basically just saying, this is a statewide problem that we should look at. I think the most important ones to go through on here, the diversity, equity, and inclusion was basically saying that we should appoint a, like a diversity officer for each district, like which somebody specific in the district whose job it is to work on DEI. And that was, that's something that we have in East Hampton and have had for a little while now. And this was actually tabled because there was, there were some folks who were trying to make it like, oh, well, we could just like give it to somebody who already works in the district, or we could say it's a committee. And it just got very vague and tenuous, and then we got to the point where we were like[1653.21] And then we got to the point where we were like four amendments deep, and then it was just tabled. I was really upset that that was tabled, actually, because I felt like it was kind of the only thing on here that referred to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And, and we weren't able to vote on it. And I was like, kind of like annoyed by that because I felt like it was a good, it was a good resolution. And I don't think it's actually that different than what a lot of districts are already doing and should be doing. So that bothered me. The, the safe storage of firearms, I just want to jump in and explain what that is. So basically, this was a resolution from Framingham that was basically instructing superintendents to send home a letter to families, reminding them to store firearms safely. And that's all it is, really. And I, I just didn't feel like that was, I didn't feel like there was enough evidence that that was going to be. And they, and that basically, what they were saying was that this could prevent students from getting their hands on weapons that they're not supposed to have and bringing them to school, which is obviously like a horrifying scenario, which we've seen happen across the country many times. I just didn't feel like there was enough evidence that that particular, that the superintendent writing a letter to families was going to result in, in safety. I just didn't, I didn't, couldn't make that connection. I think I was one of 12 people who voted against it. So it was a very, like, it passed pretty overwhelmingly. But I just wanted to put it out there. It's just not, I just didn't think it was right. I, I don't, I don't know that that is the way that I like, it's not the way that I like to make decisions. I like to make decisions kind of based on evidence and based on like what actually works. And I just feel like it's a lot to ask as a superintendent to write a letter like that when we're not really sure if it's going to help, and it could potentially make people feel, make some people feel more alienated. So I just didn't want to, I didn't want to go there. But it didn't really matter what I thought anyway. So anyway, that was my, those are our resolutions. And then after we were, I was able to go get some food after that, which was good. If you have, if you want any questions, if you want more information about any of this stuff, and this goes to anybody in the community, please just email me. I took a lot of notes. I've brought them with me tonight, if anybody has any questions, right here. And I am always happy to chat with folks. And it was a cool conference, and thank you for sending me. I'd like to go again, and I'd like to be next, less sick next time.
Thank you for that update. A quick question for you. When you listed your, the East Hampton vote and then the state vote, were you the only voting member?
I was the only voting, yeah. You could only have one member per school committee.
Okay, got it.
So it was, the, the idea was like everybody was kind of voting. Some of the school committees took it very seriously, like they had had, you know, multiple meetings up to that point to vote on the resolutions and the, and so it was interesting because there was, I, I felt like, you know, my impression was that I was kind of voting on behalf of us based on what, what I was thinking would be our school committee's perspective, except for the firearms one, where I was like, no, I really need to put it out there that, you know, this isn't unanimous. But, but that was kind of the way that I interpreted it. But some people were like, there was, you know, discussion happening on each of these measures, and people were like, well, I can't change my vote because I'd have to go back to my community and talk to the, and I, you know. So it was interesting how that was interpreted differently. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I would just add to that. I think that part of it also depends on what our level of engagement is. Our level at different times has ebbed and flowed in terms of the state. And so that level of knowing the topics that they're going to be talking about, and then our ability to gauge them at the school committee level in advance is just a degree to which how engaged we are at the state level.
Yeah, absolutely.
Things like MCAS, things like that, those things have to be worked at the state level. So I think as much as this committee, as you guys all move forward, can be more interactive and thinking about what's happening at the state level, I think it'll actually be helpful.
Yeah.
And then that conference will be very helpful for everybody.
It was, it was also just like so cool to talk to other school committee members from other parts of the state. And I've, I've done that before. Like, I, I reach out online a lot to folks and, but it's so rare, and I think since COVID especially, like to be in person with people. And it was just like really, really nice to be talking to other people who like do this weird hobby job that I do. And, you know, it was just, it was just good. I feel like I really learned a lot just about what school committee is, period. And then also about kind of the issues that are affecting other folks and kind of how other communities are solving the same problems that we're all facing. And I did feel, it was very interesting. I have not had this experience before. I did feel like there was a lot, there were, there was a lot of kind of unsettled feelings regarding the MCAS in particular, and also just regarding the role of DESI in public education. And, and I just thought that was, it was, it was good to see that. Like, I felt like there were some good discussions happening, and I hadn't expected that, to be honest, so.
Thank you. Any other committee members question for Sam? All right. Moving along on the agenda, we have the Policy Subcommittee update. Do we have an update from the Policy?
No, we have not yet because we've all been sick.
Fair enough. We will check in with the Finance Subcommittee. Do we have an update?
We do, but I think actually most of that is going to be covered by the business manager. I mean, we, we did have, we did do a final review in our committee of the FY '23 budget and some of the different sort of final dotting i's and crossing t's and pieces like that to close out the year. And that's all been submitted and waiting on feedback. And then looked also at Q1 for this new year. So everything at this point, I don't think there was anything major to report at this time.
That sounds accurate for my memory as well.
Leave up to Nick to add anything else that he wants to during his presentation.
Thank you for the update. And then we have one last point of discussion here before we move on to our business update. And so this is a time for our school committee to discuss and vote on a potential extension of our interim superintendent's position. She's currently, the interim position is currently scheduled for, appointed for a year. And when we made that contract, we talked about the possibility of extending to a second year and kind of seeing how that would go. And the, the point is upon us here where it's time to discuss if that is something we are interested in and if there is interest from the superintendent's side. And my understanding is that there are a few folks who have information to share related to this. Mayor LaChapelle, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Did Chair or did Cindy have a comment she wanted to start with? I just don't want to.
Yeah. I think, I think our plan was that I was going to start with my stuff and then go on to the mayor's presentation. Can everybody hear me through my hoarse voice?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Okay, so I wanted to just clear up some confusion that's continued since our last search. I hear frequently that the last search was rushed. It was, okay, it was rushed. But I want people to understand that was not our choice. And so I think it's important to talk about the process and how we usually do this. Superintendents usually give nine to 12 months notice that they intend to retire. They don't have to give that notice. So Dr. LeClair not giving that notice is not saying that she did anything wrong. But the pretty typical pattern is that a superintendent lets the school committee know nine to 12 months in advance. Dr. LeClair told us in December that she would be retiring in June. And most potential superintendent candidates make their decision about which district they're going to go to by April or early May. So, and that's partially so that they can make plans to spend some time in the district, their new district before the previous superintendent leaves and get to know how things run. So we basically had four months to get this done. So I thought it would be important to just talk about the typical process, when it starts and how it goes. The typical process is that it starts in September or October with a survey. That survey is sent out to staff and families, asking what they would like in their next superintendent. Then the school committee gets together, that's another meeting, and uses that info to, from the survey and from their own thoughts and ideas to design a job description and a salary span for the advertisement. Then the search committee is developed. Applications are received. And then, after receiving the candidates from the search committee, site visits are scheduled at each of the candidate's schools. Usually you have time to have multiple weeks where you schedule these site visits. And the reason is you want two people at a time to be able to go to each school of each candidate so that everybody has a chance to be in that district of all the candidates. We kind of had very little time, and we had a lot of people who had to be away at the time. They were away at conferences, and there were conflicts. Again, we're talking about that four month time period. So ideally, you want to have that time so that you can schedule these site visits over weeks. All right, then you schedule your meet and greets for staff and your meet and greets for the community. Then you have your interviews, and hopefully a few days lag so that you can have the community and staff email the committee as to their preferences. And then lastly comes the vote. So as you can see, it's ideally a much longer process than four months. And that, that longer process creates more opportunities for feedback and for community involvement. Additionally, what I want people to think about is we were just about to have two new school committee members, and they've got a lot to learn. They are going to have to study and learn the budget and get hopefully savvy about the budget by March and early April. They're also going to have to attend a mandatory training called Charting the Course. This is where you learn the do's and don'ts of being a school committee member, what you can and can't do, very important stuff. They're also going to get acquainted with the policy, and all of that takes time. Now, the budget is going to be January to March. It's time intensive. So again, trying to do two things at once just can get a little crazy. So I believe it's the best interest of the district to extend our superintendent, our superintendent's position one more year and give our district the time to do the process in its best fashion. I've talked to a lot of people about how things are going in the district, and they have all expressed how much they respect and trust Superintendent Penanda. She's brought balance to the community, and it's feeling very stable and safe. So I hope that tonight we talk about extending that contract one more year so that we give the new school committee members time to understand the process, get involved in it from the very beginning, and give the community time to get themselves involved. I think that will build the trust and confidence that was missing last time. But again, it's not something that we had wanted. It's something that we had no control over. This we do. We have some time to figure out what we want to do next. That's it.
Thank you. Sorry that I skipped over you, Cindy. Mayor LaChapelle, did you have something that you wanted to add at this point?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm going to mess up the dates. Yeah, so I, I actually, I, I, Cindy and I have talked a lot about process, where we are with the interim, where the district is, also talking to staff and kids and getting influence. But, but the one thing I, I, you know, when I look back at the, the last searches and whatnot, comments that people from the public, from the committee, had made or whatnot, really brought me to the point of there is a very tenuous string of trust between the school committee and the community that is literally very tenuous. And that the, how we approach this search needs to be dramatically different and inclusive of that feedback that we all got and tried to search. That said, I have just sent you all, I'm going to ask somebody to share, this is a draft proposal of what a timeline could look for a search. I'm not, Cindy nor I are looking for action on this, but I would like to just quickly go through this document to say this is what I'm thinking based on what went sideways the last time. I do support, I also want to talk a little bit about the DESI process for interim superintendent to make sure that everyone understands how these waivers work. And I've talked to DESI a couple of times about this. And so hopefully you found that document. The one thing I'll say is DESI, when you apply for, to have an interim superintendent to be approved, it is a six-month waiver, and it's, it's July to December, January to June. So upon offering the position to, to Maureen, we actually didn't have a waiver for a year, nor does any district get that. That said, when I started talking to DESI about what if we go forward with a second year of interim, because our search, I feel, is impractical to start on the day we have new members sworn in. And, and I would also, you know, I include myself in the group, but then with Maren and Cindy not on this, no one has experience, long-term experience in a finance, like of elected. And that's, I think that carries weight. So.
Share it. For whatever reason, I think because I have a Mac, I'm not able to.
Yeah. Can you repeat your last comment? You lost me.
About waivers?
I don't have the document to refer to either.
Hold on. I don't want to interrupt. I just wanted to get the document up there. I'm not able to do from my.
I'm going to put it up.
Thank you. And then we'll let you go.
Try and make it a little bigger.
Right.
It's not, there we go. Can you see that at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so what I just said about waivers is not on this document. So DESI gives a waiver for a superintendent to fill in, and those waivers are in six-month increments from July to December and then January to June. So we've got one approved waiver for the work that Maureen's doing now, and the waiver for her to continue for the rest of this school year has been filed with DESI. The next date, if we were to continue with an interim, whether it was Maureen or anyone else, we cannot apply for July to December of 2024 until May 1st of 2024. Pause. While we have an interim, especially if we were going into a second year or we were not starting an actual search with a posting, we need to continually be progressing in a superintendent search or a process that ends up in the hiring or job offer. That said, I started going through all my notes. And again, please, for members of the public, I put in dates, I didn't even look at days of week, just to kind of time it out. And, and what I'm proposing, and, you know, with the deference to the, the acting chair and, and Chair Online, I think this would be great exercise to workshop out for school, among the school committee, to, to figure out what we want to do with the search before anything comes definite, if we want to go down this road. What I am proposing is that the current school committee members dump into a shared document their perspective, retrospective, look at the search, what went well, which didn't, what they wanted to do over, what they heard from the community, kind of a, a dump document, so we don't lose the history.
Are we allowed to do that with open meeting law?
It's an open document that would be shared with the.
Oh, but we share with the public.
And it would be in a work session. Yeah. So.
With schedule, a specific work session to be.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
That would be the, and with that, then I propose, and I'm skipping over the thing, is that there is an ad hoc committee internally that of all sorts of the stakeholder meetings that have an official connection to the district, that develop a draft superintendent search consultant RFP. And I think that consultant, and again, it's, it's a discussion. There's a consultant role, well, there's three. There's none, we can do it all ourselves. There is an RFP that we would ask somebody, like an SAC or whoever it's going to be, to look over our job description for superintendent with the public feedback, look over expectations, salary range, major criteria or whatnot, presented to the school committee or whatever body we say. And then we, we edit it from there. And then we proceed with the search with somebody internal, like scheduling all the appointments, getting all the dates. The first model I mentioned, MSAC, we did that with Allison's, and they took care of all the, they were more, they were a consultant and a project manager. So an alternative would be the consultant sets it up, and we manage it internally. From there, the ad hoc, and it's a draft. And that goes, the draft RFP is presented at public forums because it includes a job description and to get feedback, to get yays and nays and suggestions and whatnot, very similar to what the city did with the downtown strategy plan. So all of the data was consolidated by an ad hoc group that just then went to the public board, in this case, it would be school committee. And then there are many, more than one, public forums. Maybe they're broken down by interest groups in the school to get feedback on that and to, you know, build trust or show we're attempting. And we would release an RFP in April. And the April would be for a consultant, who's also a project manager or just a consultant. From there, the bids are due like, say, two weeks later. The contract it once awarded, we sign a contract with whatever person we want to, to, to do this work, whatever the work is. We begin on May 1st. There's a progress report from the consultant to the school committee chair in mid-June, in mid-July, draft documents to school committee from consultant. And then the timetable gets nebulous. But what you want to look for is. But what you want to look for is, I would encourage public comment on draft documents and have that at a full school committee meeting as well as maybe subcommittee meetings or whatever structure we want to do. I mean, you know, sometimes we went to, yeah. The school committee chair, as I understand, we should check with maybe Russell, formalizes and signs off on that final draft of documents. Like, this is what our posting is, this is what the job description is, this is what, and that goes forward. In September, we would post a superintendent position and put on an application for people to serve on the superintendent selection committee. And I know that that was, I got a lot of feedback of how we did that and what people did not like about that. Very little, I just kind of plumped in here, people should be included. At the end of that, I propose that all efforts are to be made so the superintendent selection committee at least matches the demographics of the city, which we did not take into account the last few times we did a superintendent search. October 1st, '24, the post closes and the superintendent select committee is selected in whatever manner we want to do that or a consultant does. In a public setting, applications are screened by HR and the school business manager for job posting requirements, to make sure they have the basic. Then you're going in, maybe five days later, the post-screened applications are put before the superintendent search selection committee, whatever, yes, for consideration, and then get to your finalist group. The school business manager, who I would strongly suggest is on the selection committee or whoever is going to be our point person there, then presents finalists to the school committee at an open meeting. You're looking at November 16th for finalists to be contacted for all the current and past district visits, coffee hours with parents and stakeholder groups. And we would be looking at finalist public interviews with the school committee, the public ones, like in the library, somewhere between the 10th of January of 20, 20, I skipped a year. Yeah, 25, I just, yeah. I went from November 24 to the 25th, I didn't mean that. In January, mid-January, the finalist public interviews. Another I put in, again, as proposed, five days after those interviews, there is some way to get public comment on those final interviews and for everybody on the committee to think about what was a lot of information in a short period of time. And then we're looking at selection or offer, end of January. And then end of January, contract negotiations would begin. And again, this is literally like just setting out the date and trying to be conscious of what my notes said. Not necessarily, I think this is the way to go or not, but these, a lot of the decisions in here that I plugged in dates came up, like, if I didn't see the comment, if I didn't see the comment at these three times, I just ignored it. So just for reference. And if I saw it three or more times, I'd be like, okay. So people really wanted to comment after the public interviews, before selection was made. Like, that was really important, and we didn't even think of that. So this is, that said, I've talked to DESI about the process and what is forward progress. The chair and myself would need to write a letter to DESI explaining our process, if we were to go anywhere in this way and why it's, why we would do it this way. I think we have a very strong argument to make and many, many links to news articles of why we really need to rebuild. And I really don't say that like snottily or snide. Like, this, I want DESI to understand that this is a statewide and national issue of what happened to this district and that trust is very, very tense and that we need to have maybe even a fuller, fuller process to reinvent our superintendent search, but also to reach out to community and give community multiple opportunities to give input and actually, you know, have a seat at the table. So, you know, certainly, this is the beginning of the conversation, but we found, just with regulations, like the six-month waiver, like, how, no offense, Maureen, but how do you offer somebody a year contract but the regulating agency won't give you a 12-month waiver?
I have a question about that specifically. What prevents us from calling Maureen the superintendent versus an interim superintendent?
I feel it would be a negation of our public responsibility to the community to have, you know, to say a superintendent and an asterisk.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not just saying, yeah. I'm asking a technical question in the event that DESI doesn't grant an extension and also that our butts are in the breeze until the spring.
I, one, I'll say I'm uncomfortable talking about a person. I would say hypothetically, if that person was a superintendent working under a waiver and needed a waiver to continue to work as a superintendent, it would be unwise for a school committee to offer a full, regular contract as superintendent to that candidate. That is a quagmire. There are professional development requirements, even when you're, like, I'm a superintendent. I have to document every five years everything I do. There are some things, I am not going back to take English as a Second Language and SEL certification. I want to become a superintendent. I have to ask for a waiver for that. And I would assume most. So we would be hiring somebody who doesn't have all the requirements of superintendent.
I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm not talking about Maureen Panenda in particular. My question is, what is the distinction, as far as the authorities and regulations are concerned, between an interim and a permanent superintendent? What are the options that we have within the law to operate within?
I mean, there's a lot. I guess the hinge here is, is the interim superintendent fully certified or can be fully certified within a certain period of time set by DESI to be fully certified? I mean, that's what immediately comes, I don't want to go too far down the rabbit, but, you know, we can, yeah, we can hire, we can say we're going to do an interim and explain why it's, and then the candidate's like, did you reasonably look for somebody who is fully satisfied, who is fully certified and an appropriate match for your district? Show. Like, and DESI wants applications. They want the posting, they want the applications, they want the resumes. I've been there, like, when I'm trying to hire people. And then if you haven't, then why did you go with this person who's been an interim for so long and you're going to hire them again? And do they have SEL? Well, if they were an interim six months ago at another district and they didn't go for the SEL administrative MTEL, well, why? And what is the plan for them to do it now? Like, it's granular. And I think it would be confusing, honestly, to the public. They would think, like, what are we trying to do? They're not going to understand DESI is like a pretzel. I mean, we do, but it's.
I was just asking, what are the regulatory distinctions between an interim and a permanent superintendent?
It looks like Cindy might have something to add in. Cindy, do you?
Can I just?
Please.
Yeah. So an interim is really done when there's a need. And a regular superintendent hire is when you're projecting out. There are so many uses for interims. If a superintendent gets very ill, you hire an interim to continue that year. Often the reason why it's a six-month waiver is because sometimes you are just covering a particular period of the school year. In our case, we needed an interim so that we could do a quality superintendent search with the community in the future. And it should be, my expectation is that it's going to be fairly easy for us to get the approval on this particular next six months because DESI also sees many situations where you need a superintendent for a whole year. But it is also possible, and this is where we're weighing in, to have a two-year interim superintendent. The purpose of our suggestion here is to give new school committee members and the community time to do this in a more relaxed, thorough, well-thought-out communicative process and not crunch it in. So DESI sees this a lot, and it's my understanding that if we submit the information of what went right, what didn't go right, what our needs are, that it's a doable, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that it's a pretty doable venture.
That's my understanding with the conversations with DESI, Maureen, others, and Cindy, is, but it's a lot of documentation. I mean, it's not just like, we want to do this or we need to do this and that's it, and you file paperwork, like, there's a letter saying, what is your unique circumstance as a department that you would do this? Why does your quality superintendent search structure, why is it going to take so long? Why don't you have one? Well, we don't have, like, the world, whatever the, you know, is. And the six-month increments, now I understand, Cindy, but it was very confusing. I was like, wow.
It is, and it appears to be scary because we have Superintendent Panenda up until December 31st. Oh, no, does that mean we're, you know, we're going to miss out on the rest of the year? And that's typically not how it works, and I can't foresee any issue here in her not receiving the approval for the rest of the year. And then, given what the mayor has put together, now those dates can be very fluid, but if you look at all the work that she did, putting those items and actions down on paper, that's the kind of stuff that DESI's looking for. What is your need? Why do you need it? And what is your plan? Because the bottom line is, they want you actively looking for a permanent superintendent and not an interim.
So I just wanted to add that the complication with me is that I'm a retired superintendent. So if I was not a retired superintendent, you wouldn't have to go for the waivers. So it's because I'm retired from Massachusetts Teacher Retirement System that you have to get the waivers.
Yeah. And I know lots of districts that have retired superintendents as their interim. It's a pretty typical process.
Looking for the overview of kind of what happened and what has happened in past searches and that timeline and sort of presentation of where we are with things. Are there questions from committee members or points of discussion at this point?
This is discussion and vote? Nobody seriously expect, I mean.
No, there's no.
That's what it said on the agenda, so I can, and you're not understanding what.
We have to.
Parliamentarian-wise, you can't do it. I mean, you just got the document.
Not on this document. So on our agenda is a discussion of whether or not we would like to extend our, the contract with our interim superintendent for another year.
And so that's my question. Are we expected to vote on that question tonight?
That is on the agenda.
Yes. So when we talked about an interim, the decision that was made was that we would hire an interim for this year, and depending on how it went in the beginning of the year, we would then be voting on whether or not we wanted a two-year interim. So that is what the vote is.
And we did have a lot of discussion when we first made the offer to go this route about whether or not we wanted to build in the option to be able to have a two-year interim to be able to pull back all the threads that have been.
Yes. Yeah, this is not something just thought of. This was planned when the interim superintendent.
It was discussed.
It was discussed.
It was discussed as an option of what we would do this fall. Any discussion or questions around the votes?
The discussion I was present for didn't talk about having this discussion in November. I'm uncomfortable with the timing. I ran on your plan that you laid out tonight. I support your plan. I'm uncomfortable with the timing of this. I think, I'm uncomfortable with categorizing the city as having a lack of trust and a tenuous relationship. I think the results of the election were clear to me. I think there are two members who are about to join that should have a say in this decision. You know, that's just what's kind of bouncing around in my head. I don't, I'm not disagreeing on the basis of what we're talking about. I'm a little uncomfortable with the timing tonight. This is a meeting that's been rescheduled twice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm feeling similarly, to be honest, and I don't, I don't remember us. I mean, I wasn't here for those discussions. I wasn't on the committee yet about it being a potentially a two-year appointment, and then that wasn't.
With Maureen, yeah, you were.
Was I? Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Yes.
If I can jump in and.
Never mind then.
And add some additional points here. So as I was preparing to come to this meeting and saw this item was on the agenda and thinking back to the origins of where this came from, I reached out to as many folks as I could to gather information about what the community feeling would be. I spoke to Sean Sheehan, the president of the EEA, and got his opinion personally, and he gave me the okay to talk about how, he also was speaking from his position as the president of the EEA. I spoke to a number of different educators and I spoke to our two new committee members as well. I called and spoke with, or texted with one and called and spoke with the other one because I agree, I wanted to make sure that, you know, I understood as much as possible what the general feeling was. I spoke to some administrators at Mountain View. I was not able to speak with administrators directly other than through Sean Sheehan at the high school. But Mountain View, I was, and a number of parents. And what I can tell you from those conversations is that overwhelmingly, the parents, the educators, the EEA, and the administrators would very much like for us to seriously consider extending this contract for another year for a variety of reasons, including stability in the district and upcoming contract negotiations. But in addition, I heard from a variety of different people really wonderful comments about the stability and the trust and the boost in morale that has happened under your leadership here. And that I did not hear a different opinion about that from any one particular segment of the population.
I have heard the same, like, that's been my experience too. I think the thing that I'm concerned about is what I'm hearing is that we need to vote, there's the idea, there's, we're voting tonight on whether we would like to re, to offer another year, but then in order to apply for that waiver, we need to submit this timeline, and I'm not, do we need to do that together?
That would be separate.
No, 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 no.
To clarify, so I kind of wrote down what the process would be from here. This is just a discussion and a vote about whether or not we would like to apply for a waiver, contingent on getting the waiver, and offer an additional year to our interim superintendent. And then from there, now we're talking about putting on the agenda for December, a discussion and/or planning of the work, the working group meeting where we will discuss timeline, talk about if we want to do a Google document with lessons learned, all that kind of stuff. So the topics that were sort of presented as ideas would be discussed at our next meeting, a future meeting. It doesn't have to be December's agenda, but a future meeting. Yes.
Okay.
Correct. So what the mayor did is just outline the kinds of steps and the potential, potential dates. And to talk about Laura's point, if you don't vote now to try to extend that contract, what you are going to have to do is immediately jump into a superintendent search. Because as I just laid out, it's a very short timeline. You really, you've got to get going right now if you want to catch somebody for the next year. And this, all this does is give the new school committee members and the community time to do this the way it's usually done without compressing it into a short period of months.
Okay. As somebody who was not a participating member in your permanent search and that process, but watched it closely from the outside, I want to tell you, you're repeating one of those mistakes again tonight. Don't put something on the agenda with no opportunity for public. Don't put something on the agenda with no opportunity for public input after they've heard this discussion, rush to the vote on it tonight with this sense of urgency that I don't believe is accurate. There is no reason that this can't be postponed till December or January. I think there is a pretty good, and I adore Maureen Benenda. I'm going to concur that I have heard nothing but glowing things about her as well. That is not the issue. This issue is about calming down the process, leaving a step between every time you present a decision and allow for public commentary, not just the people you might have bumped into or the people you reached out to, but the public who watches this and takes an interest in it. That is my counsel. I would not vote to support this tonight for those reasons, not because I don't have full-throated support and appreciation for Maureen Benenda.
I'm sure.
You know, I mean, I think the timeline, I hear what you say, Laura, and appreciate it. I think one of the historical missteps of this district, as somebody who's never sent their kid to this district for very specific reasons, and one of those is, there is no history brought forward. And I think that what the last superintendent search brought to the people who are serving hold a lot of history and actual facts and momentum and emotion that should be captured in a formal process. And I feel like this committee has enough information to vote on a motion to explore a second year of an interim superintendent.
Is that, just for a point of clarification?
Yeah.
The vote is to offer a one-year extension to Maureen Benenda?
The vote is on whatever.
That's what I've been asking repeatedly.
The vote is on whatever motion is made. Right? We can't vote on a personnel issue. I mean, again, like, we're talking about Maureen's having a wonderful night, but it's an interim superintendent. Even if Maureen was moving to sink kits and she was not available for a second year, it's like, I really feel we need to start putting in motion, capture the history, make it a part of the going-forward process, so it is rounded out with this parts of the school committee, including members who stepped away, and say this school, the school department needs to look at their search, their job description, where we post, and that is some, that's a forward administrative executive function by a new school district, but the past should be captured.
Well, it does say on the agenda, vote of extension of interim superintendent position contingent upon waiver, which led me to believe that we would be voting to, basically voting to say we would like to apply for that waiver, because it says contingent upon waiver.
So is this the waiver beyond this December, or is this adding a second year?
Adding a second year.
No. This is second year.
Sorry, adding a second six-month.
So this would be a vote, we've already submitted a second waiver.
Yep.
Already done. This would be for the committee to show forward progress to explore an interim superintendent for a second year and to apply for that waiver May 1st. So what I'm trying to do with the regulations is to show the bridge from the past superintendent search, the past school committee into this and keeping that open. So honestly, we can say point-blank to Desi, this is a continuum. And we are always doing for, you know, our forward progress towards a potential second year of an interim started on the day of the vote and opening it to public comment, I mean, school committee, past school committee members, you know, having a chance to retrospectively look at what they experienced and dump that into the beginning of it.
I'm going to again hold that I don't think you should put something like this on the agenda and vote the same night and leave the public out of the conversation. It's my position.
So another thing that I'm thinking about as I'm looking at this item on the agenda, as I, you know, looking forward to the meeting, and then as we discuss it here, is that we're in a unique position that we agreed at, I cannot recall if it was our last school committee meeting or the one before that. We had a topic of discussion of when do we start talking about the superintendent search? And it was agreed upon that that would not happen until January. And so we are in a place where it's true that's not ideal. However, our options at this point, since we decided to wait until January to make a decision if we go forward with the search, that is too late. We have, that is the process we went through last time that Cindy outlined for us. It is too late. It would be too rushed. It would be the exact same timeline that we were on before. And so, as school committee members, we certainly could have the discussion today and decide we want to vote today, or we vote on the next agenda. But it is, there's not much that changes in the, like, there is, if the decision would be to wait for feedback about, and here, maybe there are folks who don't want to extend the contract, we are too late to start. From our opinion, from the opinion of some members, so we are, what is the other option?
Trust and transparency. That's the option.
So.
You should have cast that vote as quickly as you did last time. I think that was the nexus of the mistake. I don't want to make that mistake.
That's not on our agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Talking about the history, are we not? Are we talking about learning from the history?
I'm talking about, I bridged this school committee into this process to capture that, but not necessarily judge them on that.
I mean, I don't. No, I'm not talking about judgment either. I'm talking about trying to correct the mistakes and continue to improve as a body.
And I don't know how you do that without an elongated public process that begins with this school committee.
I agree.
This school committee saying, we are actively exploring another year of an interim, because Desi in January is going to ask us, what is our plan for the next school year? And we're going to say, we don't have a search, we didn't talk about what the last school committee, and we have a new school committee that has to go through training and the budget and all these other issues, and we'll talk about it in May.
I'm just, I'm still a little confused. It feels a little squishy, and I think without a motion on the table.
Yeah.
It's going to be a lot of talking in circles. So if there's somebody who's compelled to move and put a motion on the table, I think I've made my position about what the parameters I'm comfortable with tonight, and I'm not.
I would make one suggestion. What we could probably do is hold off the actual vote until December 12th. We're going to have to, you know, re-present this information, and people who have seen this meeting now would have until the December 12th meeting, I think I said November 12th, sorry, the December 12th meeting. But I agree with Meghan and the mayor, if we do not decide this, we are going to have an exceedingly rushed process, which was the big complaint last time.
I agree with what you're saying, Cindy. I think we're just talking about a little point of order. I don't think any stage of this process should be rushed, including this conversation and this vote tonight. That's my position. You can, that's open for disagreement. I'm saying that's my position.
And I would say then, all of us are derelict in our responsibility to waiting until this point in the school year and this point in an election cycle to bring it up. It doesn't change the fact that a decision and direction needs to be given from this community, to this community about where we're going. And we just did it on November 28th. I mean, to wait for, you know, I'm not saying I don't care one way or the other. I don't look at this as making a choice of why, I actually see this as a transparent response to what we heard, not only from each other, but also the community about our search. And I do think that the community should know that we're looking at this, we want to explore it, we want to capture past recollections of people who were serving upon being elected, and that the new school committee will build out a timeline and triple-check with existing members that an interim for a second year is appropriate. I don't know, February 1st, we could decide, okay, we're going to, you know, the waiver arrives for Maureen to be here from July to, January to July, February 1st, this committee decides we really need to do a permanent search, and we start. And we don't care about a timeline for the end of the year. And we'll, you know, hypothetically, we'll ask somebody who is waverable within the district to be superintendent for that time after Maureen is no longer under contract. Yeah, I mean, I just.
I think the city elected a board that they thought was going to be making these decisions, and I'm a little uncomfortable doing this, this, but I just, I don't, I don't think that's the best way forward.
It doesn't seem like there's any disadvantage to waiting.
That's my point.
Like, I just, I don't see what the problem is.
Waiting till how long are you suggesting?
Till December.
Till, well, I definitely don't see a problem with waiting until December, and that would give the public some time to give feedback.
That sounds reasonable.
So that's one thing. I also, to be frank, I don't see a problem with waiting until January either. I'm not, I'm just not convinced that there's a need to rush this like this, you know?
The concern that I have with that is that it's a false sense of transparency, because if you wait until January to make this decision, it's not a real decision. You no longer can start a search and get a quality candidate without rushing the whole process.
But we're not going to be, but I mean, the idea, I think, is that we're not going to be rushing, the whole point is that we're trying to slow the process down.
Right, so if we know already what the decision will be in January, why not make that clear at this point?
Because we've just had two new members elected, and part of what they were elected on were the feelings and the priorities of the community based on the superintendent search. I mean, that was the big issue that we all heard about. So I, you know, I just, I have a problem, I, again, I also feel like this has been kind of rushed. There are some details that I'm not so sure about. There are some things that I'd like to look more into. I don't, I don't know a whole lot about the waivers. I'd like to read up on that process and understand a little bit more about it. You know, I just, I don't, and I think that is one thing that I really took away from the last superintendent search, which is that if you're not really sure about something, you should stop and wait until you're sure about it.
Agreed.
You know, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, like, do anything sneaky or not be transparent. I'm actually trying to give myself and give the rest of the public time to figure out what the facts actually are, you know?
Well said.
And I don't think that the opinion from, like, I'll speak for myself, I don't think that, certainly, it's sort of getting framed as like trying to rush something through. And what I'm debating in my mind and thinking about and expressing transparently is that folks have a right to know what is happening. And if everyone's mind is saying, well, you can put some input in, but it's not going to change what's going to happen in January, I just want that to be.
No, I mean, I would like to get some input, because it might change my mind.
What if the consensus is, we want a fast process and we want a permanent superintendent that has to be weighed?
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean.
It's not a true democracy. We're not, this isn't a democracy in the sense that everyone gets a vote, right? We were the group voted on, and we, our job is to make decisions in the best interest of the children in our district and the educators in our district.
Right, I just don't see, I just don't see why we can't do that in January. I haven't gotten a clear answer about that.
My concern, if you look at starting this in January and you make that vote, so let's say you have the vote in January, you've already put pressure on everybody, that school district, that school committee is going to have to decide, okay, we're going to start, we're going to vote in January to have a new superintendent search, and it has to be completed in time to finish up the year. Again, it usually, it has to be completed by May.
Why does it have to be completed?
Because superintendents need to get to know their district. And if you want to introduce a good superintendent to a community, they spend time in June before the end of the school year and sometimes in May, visiting the district and the superintendent before the baton gets handed to them, so that they understand what that district is, who they are, what their values are, and what their procedures are.
I guess I just, I.
So again, most, most superintendents, let me just finish this piece, have accepted their new position in April.
Right, so I'm confused about why we can't use a longer timeline if we start in January, but we can use a longer timeline if we start right now.
If I may?
Yes, please.
So the timeline that was presented on my draft proposal is just so people could get a sense of what the process would be to have a better search. The vote today that we're asking for is the contemplation of an interim longer than one year. It does not mean in January or February, the new school committee decides that they want a search or something else. The real, I mean, on June 30th, I think I'm right with my dates, 2023, we do not have a superintendent. We know that.
Right.
Right? We know, when we did a January to June search, it didn't work out so well.
And I think the additional piece, I want to make sure that I added on that, is that we have contract negotiations coming up. I think that is what a lot of the, I understand, there's, we are in a swirling cauldron of competing things, and we're trying to make a decision that makes.
So I guess, I guess this is where, this is where having a motion on the floor would be helpful, because I think that's the other thing too, is that we're stuck on.
Clarity is a little.
I'm a little bit confused about what we're actually voting on, and, you know, I'm open to the, I don't feel comfortable voting on anything until December, period. And, but I'm open to the argument that we should do that in December.
Can I just say though, I mean, that's completely confusing, because if we're not voting on something, we're not kind of a motion on something, so.
Right. Well, yeah, exactly.
So, like.
But that's the thing, so like, if somebody put a motion, I could argue about it. But right now, I feel like, right now, I feel like we're trying to argue about, we're, I'm trying to express some concerns, and I think what's, what the problem is that we're not all thinking about the same thing. So I think there needs to be a motion on the floor. We need to have discussion on that motion, and then we can vote on it, you know? I mean, I think that, I think that's the best way to proceed here.
Do we have a motion?
I just need to look at the agenda, and I may have a motion.
Do we want to make an emotion with the amended date that instead of voting tonight, we vote December 12th on the same topic and extending the interim superintendent's position?
Would we need to make a motion to that tonight?
Yeah, we should probably decide that it is better to table that and give it until December 12th to vote on that. There is going to be quite a bit on that, on that agenda, but I think that this is important enough that if people are uncomfortable voting tonight, then perhaps we decide to do it December 12th. I really do think that it has to be on the agenda for December 12th, because it's important enough to avoid that same condensed schedule that caused a lot of unhappiness last time. Does that sound reasonable?
Just to clarify, are you used to say that you will put a motion on the floor that we will discuss this in, or vote again in, not again, that we will vote in December on this topic?
I don't think we, just a point of order, I don't think we need a motion.
We don't need a motion for that.
We don't need to vote.
We'll decide that we're.
Say that we're tabling this.
Yeah.
That's all we need to say.
Right.
Yeah, we're tabling this agenda item to the next meeting, so then the opportunity to personally, I'd rather not have constant people talking. If someone's speaking and talking, I'd appreciate if that could, one voice at a time. It's just, I think, I think we're all in agreement here, but at the same time, it's just easier to understand, definitely, the public's trying to listen to what we're talking about. So I think what all we need to do is table this conversation to next time, so that individually we can have more thought about it, more research about it, as well as any other input coming in from outside sources have the opportunity as well to do that. So we don't need a motion, we don't need a vote, we just need to get a commitment that we're tabling this.
Correct.
So motion to table the item on this agenda until December 12th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, so normally when we're.
You need to.
You need to.
You got to call for a vote now.
I know, I know that, so I'm saying.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so normally when we're all in person, we would do I and just go in a group. We have one person at home, so I'm going to roll call into a row, which is what I was saying. All right, so for the vote on this motion to table for today and discuss in December, was it to discuss in December or just table for today? What was the motion?
To vote in December.
To table for December.
To table, vote in December.
That was my motion. That's why we're clarifying. Okay, hold on. What was the motion?
My motion.
Yes.
Was to table this agenda item until December 12th of 2023.
Thank you, and that was seconded by Cindy.
Yep.
Okay. Mayor LaChapelle?
Yes.
Maren Goldstein.
Yes.
Benjamin Hershey is not here. Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, yes. All right. We are now moving along to our business update, our business manager.
On a slightly lighter note here, I will present to you my November business report, which, mind you, was written over two weeks ago at this point, so the little bit of the data in here is going to change, but you'll get a shiny new one in 13 days. So our, about this time of the year, generally, I start providing updates on, you know, how our budget for this current year is and how much we've expended and, and whatnot. As, as Member Goldstein mentioned, we talked about that during our finance subcommittee meeting two weeks ago. So we met that night, we did review the end of last year, but I'm going to focus more tonight on, on just quarter one of this year. At this time, and that actually includes a little bit more than quarter one, which would have ended on September 30th, 36.39% of our local appropriation has either been spent or is encumbered. That may seem like a, what is that number? That number's about 6% higher than at this time last year. I'm not surprised due to an increase in some costs, particularly in out-of-district tuitions, but it is a noteworthy point that, you know, we're a little ahead of where we were last year. As we move forward, I am monitoring the FY '24 budget for areas to watch, and I'm in the process of preparing some transfers that I will bring to the committee next month. Any, you know, transfer 5,000 or over needs to be approved by the school committee. And once October or so rolls around, I really take a look at, you know, who we've hired, who's left, and, you know, a couple of folks might change account numbers. So I, I really try to prepare a bunch of transfers so I can clean everything up early on in the year, and that way at the end of the year, you're not going to see so many accounts in deficit. It's really based on the salaries that are in each account and money that needs to move here or there to, you know, end up zeroing out at the end of the year. So I will bring those to you in December. They're prepared, but they weren't quite ready in time for the meeting two weeks ago. And as I said, the purpose is to clean up budget lines that are in deficit or to move money into accounts which some employees have been moved. At this time, the major area I'm watching is out-of-district special ed tuition, also vocational tuition. There are a couple, a few more students that are attending vocational schools than were originally thought. So those are two areas that I'll be watching closely as we continue with the year. Item number two, the FY '25 budget process at this point has begun. I've prepared a timeline, which is kind of split into two parts. One of it's like really in-district stuff. A lot of it is benchmarks and, you know, that I need to meet in order to get everything done and, you know, when it needs to be done, when I have meetings with various stakeholders, things like that. The other half of it is going to be contingent upon a, a lot of what, what the new finance subcommittee is going to want to do in terms of a meeting timeline when we go through the process. I mean, I put tentative dates on the thing based on when we met last or for this year, but of course, those are subject to change based on the fiat of the new committee. But again, it helps me with benchmarking and getting everything done when I need to have it done. I've already prepared the documents that will be used by members of our leadership team to build the budget. I've been working on, on salary projections, which, you know, at, at this time, due to the fact that the collective bargaining agreements are expiring on 6/30/24, you know, we, we do not know what the percent of, of cost of living adjustment increases will be for members of the bargaining units. But, you know, I can do preliminary projections based on folks that will move up a step on the salary scale, because regardless if the contract is settled by, you know, June 30th of next year or not, those folks would be entitled to move up the steps. So, you know, that piece is done. I've already met with three principals and directors, and I, I have three more meetings or four more meetings scheduled within about the next week and a half. So from there, I work on the district-wide stuff, like, you know, transportation costs, folk tuition projections, utility costs, you know, things that wouldn't fit into other people's cost centers. And then after the holiday break, all the information from principals and directors is due to me, so I can plug it into a large spreadsheet and kind of see where the preliminary bottom line is. Around that time, the mayor's budget letter will be out, so we can compare what's in there to, you know, what kind of, you know, numbers we're looking at. And then we, we meet as a leadership team to, you know, get to a place where we have something we can present to the finance subcommittee. So that's pretty much where we are with next year's budget process at this point. May I move on to the personnel report, or does anyone have any questions?
So on the added district expenses, I know that there was a, I thought it was shocking that the tuitions went up 14%, and I didn't really see on the other side of that equation a balancing offset for the school departments from the state budget. My question is, the money that we're putting out this year with those tuition increases, we won't see that actual reimbursement until next year? I'm, I know that it's off, I, I'm just trying to figure out the timeline for the budget and really cash flow as we're getting to the end of, so it's, you know, and then my second question would be, if next year's increase is, say, 4%, and that we have fewer students on the census that goes out of district, is that an opportunity to gain some fungibility with those resources to prepare for maybe whatever comes next, the following fiscal year?
Well, next year's increase is 4.69%. That's already out, which is heck of a lot better than 14, but still historically high. To answer your question regarding the reimbursement through Circuit Breaker, what we're spending this year, the reimbursement we would see next year. However, in March of 2024, we'd be able to apply for extraordinary relief through Circuit Breaker for this year's costs. There's a certain threshold you have to meet, and, you know, I'm certainly going to need to work with our special ed director to see if, I, I would probably think, based on that 14% increase, there would be a couple of students that would crack that threshold, but without actually sitting down and doing the, the math and, and looking at the individual services that kids have, I, I can't, you know, say if we would or not. Usually about the end of February, the Desi sends a memo out, and, and you have to, as a district, say if you plan on applying or not. At that time, or, or probably even before that, we will have sat down and, you know, looked at that and then tell them, yeah, we're, we do plan on applying for that. And that money would come to us in May of 2024. So that would be able to help with this year's costs. My understanding is the money for that is part of the closeout and supplemental budget that's being kicked around the state house right now, but they haven't settled on at this time. But there is a $75 million line item in that budget or that, you know, the proposal that's out there now for that purpose. So we could see some of that before this year ends.
Okay.
And I do plan on applying. It's, it's work, but it's certainly worth it because, you know, the, the costs are very high, and, you know, we have to bring every penny we can to help offset that from the state.
I wasn't sure if that extraordinary, if there was any way to get dollars into that before the end of this fiscal year. Thank you.
Absolutely. So the, the personnel report for October, we had quite a few new hires, a lot of substitute teachers, a few paraeducators, and you will see the physical therapist on there that we'd talked about for several meetings. We had one separation and one transfer as well. We had somebody who was a substitute custodian move into a permanent night custodian position. The current vacancies that are at the bottom of your personnel report, some of these are really close at this time. Again, a couple of weeks have passed since this meeting was originally scheduled, but, you know, we're, we're definitely close with, I would say, the school psychologist, the middle school librarian, the computer technician, and the diversity liaison. I don't believe we have any, any hits on the long-term SLP substitute at this time, and I, I'm not sure about the Coda. I know it's still vacant, I don't know how close we are. We did have a paraeducator resign at Mountain View in between the time of the publication of this report and now, but, you know, you'll get a current one at our next meeting with reflecting of, of what's there. And, you know, hopefully a couple of the ones on here now will be solidified by then. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Let me shuffle my pieces of paper. We are moving on then to our action items, and I will turn that over to the acting secretary to do two things at once.
Okay. Motion to approve the school payroll dated November, November 2nd, I don't have my reading glasses, apologies, 2023, in the amount of $592,629.42.
Second that.
And again, we're going to roll call, given that we have a member at home. Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maren Goldstein.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
Megan Harvey, yes.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November 2nd, 2023, in the amount of $379,245.79.
Second that.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maren Goldstein.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, yes.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 26th, 2023, in the amount of $78.88.
Second that.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maren Goldstein.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, yes. All right, that wraps up our action items. And so our last item on the agenda here is just an announcement of our next meeting dates. We have a meeting scheduled on December 12th, 2023, and as long as we don't get enough sickness that we go below quorum again, we will be here at that time. And then, as we're looking to upcoming dates, that's the last regular meeting with this group of six plus the mayor, and then there's a swearing-in ceremony in the first meeting of the new term on January 2nd, 2024, at 12 noon. I believe that's right here in this room, right?
It is. Just a clarifying question.
Yes, absolutely.
With Cindy. On that first meeting, mayor doesn't usually attend because you're electing and doing subcommittee stuff, and I would just want to record, if that changes, somebody let me know and I'll come. But I usually don't. It's an organizational meeting, so.
That sounds like what I remember from last time. I've had one experience with it, so.
Yeah, that's what's happened under, since I've been mayor, so I usually don't care on that.
Okay. Anything else from any other committee members before we adjourn? I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is that kind of a night? I don't know, I heard Sam first, perhaps. Okay, so Sam made a motion to adjourn, who's the second it?
Second.
All right. And Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maren Goldstein.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, good night. Thank you all.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.